... Start the meeting. First of all, my name is John Demato. I'm the acting mayor for the town of Bloomingdale. We're requesting mayors to replace, if we can't replace Mayor Dunleavy. See me around now? It's not until the walk, I see you are. You're welcome. So we'll get started. This is a workshop meeting of the government body of the borough of Bloomingdale in the Tuesday, May 4th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. The call is meeting's order by someone to a guy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, its republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the physical, liberally, and justice for all. You go over.
Council President Demato.
Here.
Councilman De La Ripa.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Councilwoman Hudson is excused this evening. Councilman Julen.
Here.
Yazdi.
Here.
We also have our municipal clerk, Brianna Calabro. This is the legislature of my son, John Dunbar, and our borough attorney, Paul Charles. This is a meeting. This meeting is called to pursue some provisions of the Oakland Public Meeting Law. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on April 1st, 2021. Copies were provided to look to news, news meeting and close to continuously under this building. A copy of this notice is available to the public as unfilled in the office of the municipal clerk. First day statue fireproofed and required to acknowledge there are two emergency exits for the council chamber. You door directly behind you and the door to, to mind that if you're right. If there is an emergency, walk, walk orderly to the exits and exit through the door down the stairs out the building. If there's any questions, please raise your hand in the library. So it's all settled down and leave a lot to write. Okay? To start off, we're going to do a presentation to our veterans. We started this program very long ago, two years ago, to recognize the veterans of our town of Bloomingdale and where these veterans live. It's really close to Mayor Dunleavy's heart. He had the utmost respect as we all remember our veterans in our country. And Ray Bosser, I'm sure he's probably called, spoke to him. Takes his very serious and here to his heart to recognize all of our veterans. Ray's been active with the, for the monument park in Butler to recognize all the veterans that came out of Butler High School. And it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful monument area. We can go see people that were serving the war. And I'm proud, my, my oldest brother, Kung, is in one of their bricks of the park. We recently repaid our monuments downtown. I don't know if anybody down there can notice, but we take our, our monuments very serious. They were completely redone and they're beautiful. As early as this past, last week.
Yep.
Last week, the statue of the one monument completely redone and brought it back to its natural state. Beautiful. I drive by it every day when I drive out of town and give it a million looks. I'm proud to say I'm a son of a war veteran, a Korean War veteran, or a brother that served in Vietnam, or a brother that served in Vietnam. They were also lucky enough to come back to us, or some veterans that served this country, to give us all the things that we did, did not come back. And we have to, we have to honor them at all times. So I'm here to what, right? Would you like to say? No, you're good. He's usually a man of a lot of words. I don't know what happened. But Ray's been instrumental in this, this whole thing. So without further ado, I'd like to recognize our veterans. And if you're received, if family will receive a certificate from the borough. Presented in honor, and I won't reveal the name right now, so I can tell them all. But it says with great pride and admiration, so I will be honorably named, I might have just described because it's everybody's name in this. So according to this, John, you would do? Okay, a flag, flags you that will overlay over top of streets where these veterans live. So if you guys can remove it, you're right. That's not like a starting point. We didn't grab it. We'll get Ray's off.
Very nice.
Thank you. So is the family members between Doros? Come on up. This is a certificate of appreciation and gratitude presented in honor of Dave One C. William Doros with great pride and admiration, in one of his away, who will honorably be named Dave One C. William Doros in memory of his grave service and sacrifice in defense of our great nation and our freedom. Presented this fourth day of May, 2021, by the acting mayor, John Demato, and the government body of the borough of Bloomingdale. This is the certificate of what could be your name? Thank you. Next. Certificate of appreciation for the, actually for the family of David R. Ravel?
Jeez.
You're going to sell certificates. All right. You want to come up? You okay? I'm going to hand this to you. You hold that. I'm here, man. Tyler? Welcome Tyler, right deputy. Certificate of appreciation and gratitude presented in honor of Sergeant David R. Ravel. With great pride and admiration, Ravel can road, will be honorably named Sergeant Dave R. Ravel in memory of his grave service and sacrifice in defense of our great nation and our freedom. Presented this fourth day of May, 2021, by the acting mayor, John Demato, and the government body of the borough of Bloomingdale. Then with Howard Morris. Okay, you have to look at it down here. Okay? And when we do, we will absolutely get the proof of it. Certificate of appreciation and gratitude presented in honor of Tech Five, Howard W. Morris. With great pride and admiration, the Union Act will be honorably named Tech Five, Howard W. Morris, in memory of his grave service and sacrifice in defense of our great nation and our freedom. Again, presented the fourth day of May, 2021, by the acting mayor, John Demato, and the government body of the borough of Bloomingdale. And that's for Howard Morris. Martin Weaver. You couldn't make it. This is for private first class, Martin Weaver Junior. Certificate of appreciation and gratitude presented in honor to private first class, Martin Weaver Junior, with great pride and admiration, Island Act, will honorably be named PFC Martin Weaver Junior, in memory of his grave service and sacrifice in defense of our great nation and our freedom. Presented the fourth day of May, 2021, by the acting mayor, John Demato, and the government body of the borough of Bloomingdale. And that's for private first class, Martin Weaver. Right now? In Bloomingdale? In Bloomingdale? Certificate of appreciation and gratitude presented in honor of private first class, Celestial Waker. With great pride and admiration, Union Act, will honorably be named PFC Celestial Waker. In memory of his grave service and sacrifice in defense of our great nation and our freedom. Presented this fourth day of May, 2021, by the acting mayor, John Demato, and the government body of the borough of Bloomingdale. Right before allowed to, in the decorations, I would honor to go there and present that to the person. Again, our veterans, especially Memorial Day coming up, we'll reach them out and we will be hosting Memorial Day parade, which is sort of back to normal. Of course, practicing what we need to practice, but we go to Butler, to Butler Park, to Butler Park, to finish up at Al Park, Sloan Park, down to town. So that's kind of normal. But I can't tell you how grateful I am to families coming out to, to honor these gentlemen and how proud I think we are of our veterans in Bloomingdale. So again, thank you for coming and I'm going to start our regular meeting. You want to take pictures, stand up there, but they will be installed.
Tomorrow, we'll start installing.
Tomorrow. So you go up on any one of these streets, you'll be able to recognize these five gentlemen. Again, thank you for coming.
Awesome. Fantastic. Awesome. Okay. Awesome.
Like there was no break. It was just, right, there's no, there's, there's no hatch event to it. So what I started doing is I find a prompt and go. I had to, especially after Michael Butler, I didn't, you know, I'm home with my brother and it's like, you know, his part, are we ever having dinner? You know, and that was when he was still at the park and he couldn't really do it.
How's he doing?
He's doing great.
Thank you.
He's not a hundred percent to go back to work, you know, doing it. Cause he climbs, he's a lineman.
You guys ready? Okay, we're going to resume at seven seventeen. We do have one non-agenda item, which is a proclamation to acknowledge.
May.
May as National Foster Care Month. So we'll get to that later. Do you have a motion to open up to early public comment, please?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody wishing to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Okay, this is my man. I have a number of questions that are on the budget and what's going to be here tonight. And I bet I have a problem and I'm not going to be able to maybe get into the question. I just feel like something that should be addressed, I don't think that we addressed before the budget is about that. The first question I have is that I can't see regarding the traditional pay for municipalities for Bloomingdale is a $791,000. I think we're going to have to address the budget.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, Linda.
Can you hear me now?
If I could take this out, it'd be a lot easier. Is that, is that, is that on?
That mic should be on.
It is on.
Okay? Better?
Go ahead.
Okay. The $791,849 that Bloomingdale is getting, where is that addressed in the budget? Well, I mean, it's up to you to answer questions.
Well, we'll take the questions and then when it comes to when we're going to actually adopt, in between now and then, I'm sure we can finance.
Okay, you can give that to me as well.
And that was the $791,000?
Correct. And the reason why I go, I'm wondering why it's not in there is because this cash was supposed to be used for COVID-related expenses, covered most revenues due to pandemic to maintain critical services.
I can answer that. This is real simple. The state or the federal government has not released any of that money. So we cannot assume that that money's actually coming and when it, when they do release it, we're going to get half. Okay? But until we have that money definitely coming to the borough, we cannot assume that it's going to help our budget. When it does come, because I've called the governor's office and emailed a few times to see when, there's, and, and the better guidance that they're going to give us on how we can actually spend it, because that is changing. So once we receive that confirmation that the, that money is coming to the borough, then we can take that money and allocate it and offset some costs that are actually in the budget. And then Donald will handle that. But it is kind of specific right now, how we can spend it and where we can spend it and has to be COVID-related. But they said they were going to ease the, I'll say ease the pain to make it more usable. But we haven't got the guidance from the federal government, the state has not. I was told by May 11th, they're supposed to have it because it was 60 days from the time the authorization came from the federal. And then they had another 30 days on top of that to get it to us. And they could also apply for an extension to extend it an additional 30 days, Mike?
30 days if they have, if they claim hardship.
Yeah, so it could be 120 days before we even see how it's going to be spent. So we can't assume, but we're only getting half now, half next year, and we have four years to spend.
Okay, I have a question related to that, is how much is the budget, the budget increase going to be this year?
That I will, we'll talk about at the next meeting.
Well, because then my question is that, from what I understand, it's not going to be that drastic an amount. And since it's not going to be, I would, I personally would suggest that, that the budget can reduce by whatever that amount is, there'd be no increase this year, because you are going to get spending some of this COVID money and that can offset the expenses. That's my comment. I have never been with my own issues here. Again, this is something I had addressed last year, that as far as the interest. Last year I had questioned why there was only $40,000 in there for interest. And this year I know it's all, well, that's where you can't expect to get that much money. But we did get $76,000 this year. And again, we only have $40,000 anticipated. Then I question why that would be still so low.
And I was going to say, all the questions you have, we're going to, you can ask on the first, I mean, if you want to go through them all and give it to us, you can, you can send an email to, to us with all your questions.
I will do both. I'm going to address them now and then I will do them in writing.
Okay.
And I hope that you'll get an answer. Sale of municipal assets, what assets have you sold?
I'm just going to write these down.
I can send them to you, just so I can obviously reveal where.
Yeah.
Put my questions off. For legal services, I'm just wondering what the other expenses relate to?
Okay.
For celebration of public events, there were no public events this last year, but yet there was $19,661 supposed to be spent. There's also an additional insurance premium of $10,000. I just wonder what that was for. Construction official, the increase, there's almost an increase of, almost double of what that cost of it to make.
Just for the record, Councilwoman Hudson at?
Seven twenty three.
Seven twenty three.
Okay, the webmaster gets on it by $70,000, just wondering why? We have a 20 compensation of $20,000 this year and there wasn't anything spent last year, I don't know. I'm just wondering if we anticipate paying more, please? Payment on bond principal, we're not, sorry, no, we're not, we went down, no, sorry, it took a while. It's just an appreciation. And I'm just wondering why, because I mean, I kept hearing that we're going to be paying off our debt, why is our principal going up? There's a special emergency authorization of $36,000. For other, other operating expenses, we have over $50,000 for the water and sewer. And last but not least, payment of laundry to go for the water and sewer also. I didn't think we had work for water and sewers, so probably.
And that's for the utility?
Yes. Okay, I will send an email to John and send it to you, anyone else that can copy on that. I will copy it from the room.
You can. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, motion to close early public? Is there? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, reported committees.
Anybody? Don?
Yes, I do. Cleanup day is this weekend. If anyone would like to sign up with their group, they can email me at d hudson at bloomingdellnj.net. What else do we have? I think that's it. Memorial Day Parade is?
Memorial Day, 31st.
Lineup is 8:30, 9 o'clock start. It's going from Butler to Bloomingdale. I think that's all we have.
I have a couple things. So we have a ribbon cutting for Jazzercise, new business opening up in, in town. It's on 5/8, so Saturday at 11:30. They're also going to do a little bit of an event in Sloan Park before that. I think it starts around 10 o'clock, should be a pretty good time. So I encourage everyone to try to make that. We're also going to do a, it's called a second Friday event we're trying to put together for Sloan Park. So this is through the business community, through some other volunteers in our town, and also through our events. So we can do a concert series in the park. We also have some vendors in the park, so we can do shopping. And then we're also going to have a library there as well to do some crafts and things like that for children. So we're working that out, more details to come, but I just wanted to put the word out there, scheduled for now, the second Friday of July, September, and August. And then, last thing, the Taste of Bloomingdale, so this is a punch card initiative I've brought up a couple times, that's in full swing. We've gotten a few that have been submitted into the town. Again, the way the program works is you go to any participating restaurant in town, or really anywhere that, that generally sells food, like a deli, prepared food mainly. And if you get 10 punches or stamps, they might actually be stamps by now, you can then submit that. We do a drawing at the end of every quarter, and then the winner receives a $100 gift card, which was also donated by several sponsors that we've had for the event. So that's a quarterly drawing, so be on the lookout for those when you're out shopping. Thank you.
I'm sorry, John, I did have one more thing. The COVID, Passay County COVID site is now open to walk-ins. You'll find the information on our Facebook page and our website. Just so everyone knows, that's Modell's Tuesdays, Thursdays, 9 to 6, Passay County Community College, Wanacue, Tuesdays in May, 9 to 2, Camp Hope, which is West Moleford, Thursdays in May, 9 to 2, Montclair State University, Saturdays in May, 9 to 2, Enhaleden Municipal Complex, Monday, May 24th, 1 to 6. So those are walk-ins.
Okay, I believe all the mega sites are open for walkers now throughout the state, I believe. I saw an email today about that, so that's good.
And, and also an update, because I know that we've had a couple questions on the health department side. Because of the issue with the J and J vaccine, we were not able to get our homebound residents vaccinated yet. And the reason being that the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccines do not travel well. And because they have to be kept cold, plus they literally just don't travel well. I don't have best to explain that. So I actually spoke again with our health department officer today, and they are still working on it, and they're hoping that something will be in the works for our homebound residents by next week. I, I just don't want them to think that they are forgotten, they're not forgotten. I'm staying on top of this probably every couple days with our health officer. So we will get those homebound residents done. I believe, Bree, we only have a few people on the list.
Yeah. About seven.
We did pretty good compared to where we started, so we started with dozens of people on our list, and we got them all taken care of, and everybody's vaccinated except those couple homebound, and we will get them done.
I think it's really good for our state and for the well-being of our country that the, the vaccine is getting readily available to anybody. So the more we do that, the less we'll have to do this eventually. So I think it's good.
Yeah, just a quick update. I didn't want to talk about this until we met with the family, but the John Dunleavy dedication is going to be on June 12th. We're going to meet at the Sloan Park. We're essentially dedicating the bridge to John Dunleavy, that's, it's going to be in his name. And we're going to follow that up with the time capsule. We're going to bury it back in the ground. And there's going to be, there's going to be a few of the previous mayors talking, giving speeches. So it should be a good event, and family's going to be there. We'll do a ribbon cutting ceremony, celebrate the park being reopened again. And it'd be a celebration of John's dedication to the town and everything he's done for us.
And his tree, we're going to wait until the holidays and do something with his family. The dedication of the tree at the holiday time, when I, it could be decorated, and we'll have a plaque there as well. I don't know if any of the public noticed, but the Christmas tree, we had two Christmas trees at Sloan Park, one was for the veterans, one was for John Dunleavy. The John Dunleavy one is now planted in the front of Town Hall. So that will get dedicated to him and decorated in his honor every year at Christmas.
Yeah. The June 12th event, the times have not been put out yet. The committee has another meeting a week from today, and then the final plans will be made for that day. It's two important events. The burial of the time capsule, we're a few years overdue, and the, the one issue was the park wasn't done. But now it's done, and then we had, of course, what we went, all went through last year. So. So if you've seen any work that was done in the park on the left-hand side, you might have saw a machine. It all taped off, that's the area where the time capsule will be buried. Peerless concrete donated, a concrete vault that we put in the ground. So when that gets opened, everything should be exactly the same as we put it in when it comes out. How far from that? Hundred?
Hundred and fiftieth.
Hundred and fiftieth, our hundred and fiftieth. So I think it's, it's pretty neat. So, more to come on that. Just watch the social media, we'll put it, we'll put it out. We'll probably, we'll mention it again. We'll have the final stuff by our May 18th meeting of what we're doing, so everybody can participate. It'll be Saturday, I'm assuming it's going to be Saturday afternoon sometime. And there will be music, vendors. But we're going to be cautious of everything that we need to do with the social distancing. We'll, we'll follow the guidelines, and it seems like the guidelines are opening up a little bit. So there's a lot of stuff going on in the park this year, and that's why it's there. It's fantastic. So, more to come. Anybody else?
I had a couple.
Go ahead.
Nothing since the last meeting. All good.
Okay.
Just a couple of things, John. The mayor and I met with the, the new school super last week. Had a real good meeting in here. He seems to be on board, as the previous supervisor was, with what his expectations are. He's open to suggestions. We offered our help to him. He gave us the green light to run our summer camp program with Walt T. Bergen, which was awesome, because we definitely wanted to get back to some type of normalcy. Subsequent to that, we met with the Board of Health, Tom, Rachel and I, and we talked about what kind of precautions we need to put in place with COVID. So he has a whole big list of things we went through. We're putting together a book for him as well. So that, that's an awesome thing that we got rec going. The mayor and I also met with the Senior Advisory Board, had a good meeting with them. We'll stop in there so often. They got to see who we are. Did a little information about what we come from, where our backgrounds here in town. And it was good to put a face with the name. They were pleased that we showed up there. And last, the mayor mentioned Sloan Park. We did the statue and the plaque restoration. Also noticed that the machine gun was taken down. We have a outside company that's going to repair the machine gun and then put it back up, hopefully before Memorial Day. And then we also have some service flags from all the departments, the services, being donated by the veterans. So we're looking for a place down there where we can actually display the, the services, the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine, Coast Guard, and Merchant Marine as well, so.
That's it? Okay.
Anybody else?
Good? Okay. Okay, item number nine. Resolution number 2021 5.1 consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the floor to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. There's one item on here. Item F was temporary waiver of fleet market limitations for Lena's Restaurant at 49 Main Street.
We're just going to pull it.
Yeah, we're going to pull that off for today. It's going to go to our planning board for their review. And then on the May 18th meeting, we'll put that back on the agenda for approval. Okay? So A through E. We have a motion, a second on the floor. Roll call.
Tomato?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Introduction of, I guess we're on new business. Item A, 2021 municipal budget. This is the introduction of ordinance number 11-2021, the 2021 index rate cap bank. Do I have a motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
Second.
So that was Rich and Ray?
Yes.
Okay, Borough of Bloomingdale, calendar year 2021, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Okay.
So your second and final will be June 1st.
Okay. Second and final reading for that will be June, at our June 1st meeting. Introduction, resolution number 2021 5-5.6, introduction of the 2021 municipal budget. Do I have a motion on the floor for the introduction?
Second.
Rich. Okay, here.
Let me just do a roll call here, right?
Roll call.
Okay, roll call?
Sorry. Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'll just read that. Introduction by title of the 2021 municipal budget of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, for the fiscal year 2021.
And that also will be June 1st. Right? Okay. Adoption of resolution number 2021 5.7, self-examination of the 2021 budget. Do I have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Hudson Yasi.
Was it Hudson Yasi?
Yes. Okay, then roll call, please.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Okay. Item B, adoption of resolution number 2021 5 dot?
Eight.
Eight. CWA white collar unit contract. We, this contract is actually a five-year deal. We are already one year into it. This is the second year of the contract, which has been finalized and sent to our borough attorney's office for blessing and approval from the CWA. Do I have a motion on the floor to accept this contract? Is that you, John?
I do, second.
You're second, John, second. Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Yasi?
Recused from this one.
Tomato?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, just want to thank yourself and Councilman Delaripa for your help with the, my first contract negotiation. And Samaro Group.
Yeah, there was a lot of back and forth here. We went through this contract line by line, and we got to a good place for the borough. So again, thank you to Sherry for helping us, Donna. Michael Yasi putting our spreadsheets and everything together, so we were able to reach an agreement. And thank you to Terry as the union representative. Okay. Item C, adoption of resolution number 2021 5 dot 9. Award of contract for professional planning services, Collier Engineer. You want to explain it?
Yeah.
Okay.
This came up during review.
Turn your mic off.
Oh. That would help.
This came up with ordinance review. We were asked to make some modifications to ordinance 12-1 dot 3 provisions of the Mount Laurel II decision, set aside units required, and then the 92-55 dot 1, B1A, commercial zone and principal permitted uses. We thought we can just kind of change things and make modifications, but both attorneys from the planning board and from our attorney said we should really get a planner involved with some of these decisions and how it's going to play out. So that's the reason we're trying to get a professional planner service to take a look at that ordinance.
And that cost, we will not exceed?
Not to exceed 2,400 at this point, yep.
Yeah. So it's important that we redo this. So do I have a motion on the floor to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Julen?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Okay. Item D, adoption of resolution number 2021 5 dot 10.
10.
Awarded contract for fireworks to Serpico Pyrotechnics. We are planning fireworks for June 26th. It will not be the usual food trucks, bands. We're just going to do fireworks to make sure we keep everything safe. And this is providing the guidelines are increased into where they're going from the governor's office to change the outdoor amount of people we can have. So right now, we're scheduled for June 26th, but we're going to probably open up the school an hour and a half before, so people can come in and get seated. We don't want, or we're going to try to avoid people running all over the place. That's why we're not doing games, we're not doing rides. It's just fireworks to bring some type of normalcy back to the borough and give something to our residents to celebrate the Fourth of July.
So May 19, we go to 500, correct?
Yes.
In the contract, it said if there are no changes up to 48 hours, we're fully refunded, I believe.
Yes.
If that number stays at 500, I can't recall a typical head count when we did it prior to COVID. It's got to be more than 500, right?
We're over 1,000 people.
Okay, so.
We'd have to make a decision one way or the other.
That would just be my concern, how to manage that.
The only way we could really manage that number is we'd have to limit it, would be very tough to do, to Bloomingdale residents, because we get people from all over, whether a family comes, brings relatives, or whatever. We have to, we'll have to make that decision when we get closer. I personally believe that the numbers will open more.
I, I as well.
So.
Is that 500 based on a lot size too? Or is it like?
So there's, there's two things that Murphy talked about. He talked fixed-seat venues, like Giant Stadium, the Art Center, and then open-field venues. And open-field venues that currently are at 200 or 250, and then they're either going to double or increase to 500 in that.
And new executive orders says as of May 7th, it stays to 500.
For outside, outside venues?
I can't hear.
May?
May 7th.
May 7th.
According to the most recent executive order.
Oh, May 7th, okay.
May 7th.
500.
Okay, well, either way, it's the same number.
But you are supposed to keep it?
You're still supposed to be able to social distance.
It's a 500 limit, so long as you can still do the six feet of social distancing while you're inside the venue. That's how the executive order reads.
And that will be difficult. So.
And something like, like that, yes, it will be difficult.
Yeah, I agree 1,000% with getting back to normalcy. I'm starving for it. That would just be my concern.
Yeah, and we'll just, we'll have to watch it as we go and make a decision when it gets closer. Hopefully it'll get to where we need to be, and then we can enjoy the fireworks.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, we should schedule it, and he will, if we had to push it out to October, say we can't do it, and it gets better in October, we can reschedule for a new date in the fall, as we're dealing with, as we're dealing with the fishing.
Can I give input into this? This is yesterday. The governor announced that effective May 19th, complete removal of outdoor gathering limit. That's right on the governor's page.
But that's, isn't that family gathering, like a backyard picnic, or?
That's why we usually wait for an executive order to give guidance as to that.
Because I've, I've read that too, but it's kind of vague. So.
I'm sure there's going to be more to come, because it seems like weekly now.
Agreed.
It's coming out.
Okay, do we have a?
We need a motion.
Okay, can I have a motion on the floor to accept the fireworks couple? So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yasi? Yasi?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I don't know if I can hear or. Tomato?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Okay. Item A, adoption of resolution number 2021 5 dot 11, award of a contract for janitorial services. Janney King, is that the company?
Janney King.
Janney King. You want to talk about that, Mike, where the cleaning and?
I'll make the motion, and then we can discuss it.
We need a second? And Rich is the second. Yasi, Yasi? Discussion?
Yeah, so this, we talked about this the last meeting. This company is, is one that we went out to quote, they would allow us bid. It's in the budget, it's in building and grounds right now for the 2021 budget. But we're also looking to offset, once we get the COVID money, to offset the budget, so we can put it back into the building and grounds and use the COVID money for the cleaning of this building and this building alone. From ground all the way up, three times a week.
Okay.
Now that we're open to the public, that's all we're doing.
Okay. Roll call.
Tomato?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Okay, item F, adoption of resolution number 2021 5 dot 12. Authorizing the easement extension agreement with Tilcon. Do I have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Okay, discussion. Roll call.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Okay. Item G.
Excuse me, John. Can I, can I go back to and just make a comment on one piece?
Sure.
On the, on the janitorial award?
Boy, you're going far back.
COVID has proven to be an airborne virus. And I think this contract is just for wiping down and spraying. I would suggest we consider adding some type of filter, changing or upgrades to that.
To the air system?
Yeah, maybe it's more frequent cleaning of the filters.
That's already done.
Through this?
We did it through the last CARES Act.
And they're continuing to do that?
Frank, Frank was kind of heading that project up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's done.
Thanks, Frank. Sorry about that, thank you.
That's okay. Okay. Item G, right?
513.
Yep. Adoption of resolution number 2021 5 dot 13, authorizing the land donation agreement with Tilcon. Motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Hudson Yasi? Roll call.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Uh, yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Just wanted to make a statement that the land donation and easement extension agreements that we just adopted on F and G are really significant financial and planning milestones for the borough. The agreements have been negotiated by the administration for the borough to accept the donation of the 33 acres of land that is commonly known throughout the borough as the Meere tract. This is being accepted with the sole condition that the borough continue on the path of developing the land for affordable and market housing. The borough will have the right to sell the land so long as those development rights are achieved. In addition, the mayor and council have authorized an easement extension agreement, which provides for a one-time payment of $2.4 million, whereby the town will lease back to Tilcon the ability to utilize a portion of the haul road between the Meere tract and the Tilcon existing quarry site. This will yield immediately upon closing the amount of $2.4 million for such access. These are significant steps that have been negotiated by the borough to position itself as the owner of the Meere tract at no additional cost to the borough and with the exclusive right to sell and/or develop that tract of land and the benefit of the leaseback of the haul road to Tilcon with an immediate payment to the borough of $2.4 million. These are highly unprecedented steps whereby a governing body has placed itself in the position of holding title to such land at no cost in an effort to address development and planning while gaining significant financial benefit for the borough. The next step will be to consider various options regarding the development and/or sale of that Meere tract.
Thank you. Okay. Late public comment. Do I have a motion to go to late public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody who wanted to speak, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. And if I can hear you, I'll answer you.
Dan Hawkins, 6 Pearl Street. I don't think you'll have any trouble hearing me.
I won't, go ahead.
With regard to the last, the land donation, I was wondering, is Til... They would, they would take care of the site improvements to make the site more attractive to an eventual developer. So are they still on the hook for this or not?
At this time, the, the deal, once this is done, the deal with TILCON, we're pretty much done, okay? When we work out a deal hopefully with a developer, they will have a deal to take the mountain to grade, to where it needs to be, to be, to be developed, all right? TILCON at this point is not, is not doing that, at this point.
I thought that was part of the deal when they...
Originally, it was, but to do, to do that, it was kind of doing it backwards, because you have to have a site plan to develop it, too. TILCON would have no idea what the site plan would look like from any developer. So we can't let TILCON go in there and take it down, because they don't know if they're taking it down, too.
Well, that's true, but they could still be, they could still be saddled with the obligation to do so.
Well...
But now, now it's going to be on the developer and/or the town to pick up that...
I can tell you one thing, it will not be the town. Okay? Because then that would be, make no sense at all, because that would, we might as well take the $2.4 million and just give it back. All right, that's not going to happen. Ray, would you agree? All right, because we're...
And if the developer comes to us saying, saying, "I want a pilot because it's going to be so expensive to grade the mountaintop," what are we going to tell them?
That's all part of negotiations. That's a negotiation factor, and I can't really go into that because we're not negotiating a pilot yet. All right, so that's speculation at this point. As you know, we've done a pilot before, but that, you know, many towns around us have several pilots. But at this point, we still have to have a developer to discuss a pilot. Is that going to happen? I'm hoping so, we can reach a deal with somebody to get to the next step.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tell me if you can hear me with the mask on.
Name and address.
Just name and address.
Karen Schmidt, 5 Woodward Ave. Happy Star Wars Day. I'm asking if the town can pursue putting in a traffic light at the intersection of Hamburg Turnpike in Elizabeth Street. It's becoming more difficult to see traffic since the apartment complex was put in, because there's a lot of pickup trucks that will park on the corner in the evening, and it makes it very difficult to see traffic coming down Hamburg Turnpike from Greeland, especially if you're coming off of Main Street in Butler to make a right on the Hamburg Turnpike, and somebody's pulled up next to you that wants to cross over to Elizabeth or go left, they pull up, so you're creeping forward, and it's now a tussle between who's going to pull out with the traffic coming down, who can see. You also have people at the crosswalk, you have to be aware of. I've seen a lot of close calls for people there. It's getting warmer, you have more people out walking to the shops over in Butler for redesigns. And once the construction starts on 23 to replace that bridge decking just after, people are going to be jumping off of 23 to cut through, going down more. I talked to Jordan Bus or the STA, whatever they go by now, they have difficulties pulling out in the morning because of all the traffic coming down 23. If you could, if we could get a traffic light in there to control the traffic during the busier time, and at night, it might just be a flashing light, who cares? But that would also give people who are leaving Glenwild to get onto Hamburg Turnpike to break in traffic, because it gets busy there during normal business hour, during rush hour and stuff. But it's more, it's becoming more of a safety issue, and it's becoming more hazardous. I know the town would have to be put at expense for it, but I'd rather have the town pay for the expense of putting a traffic light in than the town apologizing to somebody for getting hurt there. But it's, it's hazardous, and if we can look into that, I've asked before, and there's always been the cost about the county giving traffic. If they do a traffic cap, do it during school time, not during the summer, because you're going to get, and do it in the morning when the buses are coming through, and people are walking over in the evening. But we need to do something, we can't just be, one traffic light isn't doing it, the back traffic up, we need something, we need that second traffic light, yeah, we really do.
Okay, well, I think we'd have, probably first would have to do a traffic study.
Right.
So we will have a conversation with the chief, because he, his traffic bureau would have to do a study on it, and then if he thinks it's necessary, or we think it's necessary from what he comes back with us, we'd have to go to the county, and that will take time. So we'll start the process talking to him.
Yeah.
And Mike and I will sit with him, and we'll start the process. And if he comes back with yay, then we'll take it to the county.
Then also, what is this, people who live from Greeland, Elizabeth, that are trying to come out over there? Because you can't, you can't pull out in Greeland, that's too dangerous. You have to come down Elizabeth, where people actually cut through even further and end up on Star Lake.
Yes, they did, yeah.
So that would help really regulate travel, make it easier for everybody to come and get out of that area, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
You note that, Mike?
If that's a county road, then that's got to be a county install. I have a picture of a follow-up of what I can't say. I took it from a county attorney. Trucks, and if you're coming up from Butler, trying to make a left, there's trucks there from the park.
That's their parking spaces.
Yeah, I don't know who allowed it, because it's ridiculous to try and get out.
Well, that parking lot has not changed.
So usually, in my experience, what you're talking about at that parking lot, sure, they're allowed to park there, but somebody has a, in the evening, want to come through there sometimes, somebody has a right to come back into the gap, and now, when they're hanging in the parking space, and it's interfering more with your view of the road traffic coming down.
I know it, and I'm on your, I am on your side.
And you can't help, you can't park there because you're blocking the view. They're allowed to park, you can set back, but it's just the way each of those positions, it makes it more difficult, a lot of the white, another because they get...
Well, okay, well, let me, like I said, I, I see the picture, I know the, the building, the building's been there...
Building's been there.
Forever.
Nobody's...
Well, when it was usable, when it was restaurants and a bar, that parking lot was used more than what you're seeing there. But again, let me go to, let me go to Chief Burrow. He has to do a traffic study on it and go from there.
The other suggestion I could make is to get Morris County and the same county involved, because that's a Morris County group, so...
Which is a Morris County group?
Main Street, Butler.
Not when you come over the bridge, it's not.
What's over the bridge?
What's over the bridge, you're for St. County.
Still, they're letting their track of coming...
They're letting it come into our town, yeah.
Yeah, so this way is a Morris County group. I mean, this, St. County's already set, so it's now a different issue, because I come down this way, and to get out, I've almost stopped it.
Okay.
Three, four times.
Okay.
So there's an issue.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I would add through your conversations, sun glare coming home makes it 10 times that. It's, it's a legit issue.
Okay.
Yeah, it really is.
Well, we'll start the process and see where it goes. Okay.
Good point.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Come on, Amy. How are you?
Evelyn, she works for the Hillside Drive. I was just wondering, are we doing the, doing it for the police academy? Would you, would you have any to break up?
The police academy?
Do you know what they're doing?
Actually, they have not made a decision yet.
Oh, okay, because I, I loved it. My kid was the inaugural class, and he did it three years, my toddler did it three years, and with this whole, you know...
That's a great program. I know it's a great program.
Climate of policing, it'd be great for the kids to get to know the cops in town, firemen in town, whatever, I think it's in there. And I don't, I don't know, Butler, we need to know what did it, and I don't know if Butler is doing it this year, but it's called the Night Out on Crime, which is August, and it's nationwide. That'd be something to look into. Basically, it's called the Night Out on...
Is that what Butler hosts in the park, I believe? They host that in the park?
Night Out, isn't Night Out like a drug alliance-ish thing? Isn't it kind of a drug alliance, like...
It's with the police department, and they get pizza. I don't know, I used to go to it with kids in Butler. That's something, I don't know, we can handle this, but I just, I just, and, you know, going back to the, for the block, I loved when the fireworks was just the fireworks and like the poor net people and not the craziness. So the president just sits there, blanket and chair, and sits, it's going to be nice.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Hopkins, it's me, Dan. I just want to follow up with Dan, a bit, question. My understanding, and I have a pretty good understanding of what happened with the bill and the Meere tract and TILCON, but that agreement that was entered into with TILCON, the purpose of it was that the property was not developable unless TILCON prepared it.
Mm-hmm.
Now, TILCON's not prepared.
At this point, no.
So why, so the purpose we entered into the agreement to quarry, to grid quarry on Federal Hill is not being done, it doesn't exist anymore.
Mm-hmm.
Did you pass the statute?
Well, that was then, this is now. If we couldn't work a deal with TILCON to do it...
We had a deal with them, that's why you passed that ordinance.
I understand that. But the deal now is, TILCON's given us the property, and then it's our job to sell the property and then get it developed.
But they're always going to use the property.
I understand that, but the deal, the way that the...
Sometimes they just gave us, gave it to us, though. They didn't think that it's just, they entered into a deal with us, they got quarry commission, they didn't have to take care of, preparing the property, so the promise of due, if you were told it was going to cost, it was cost prohibitive, and that's why we had to have them do it, and we're not doing that.
As of today, we're not doing that.
I'll have to contact my attorney and find out what's going on, because that's just not what the agreement was, and you have to contact that judge.
Okay.
Next question is, the, who's on the cannabis regulatory...
I can't hear you.
Cannabis Regulatory Commission?
Marijuana.
The mari...
Cannabis Regulatory.
Yeah.
Here you go.
I am.
I am as well.
Yeah.
Okay, I can give you the people, actually, I can just give you this, right?
It's a draft, but it'll, they adopted it, so I could give you the sign tomorrow.
Okay, as far as I'm concerned, two mayors were invited.
Anthony Graziano, Ann Duham, Phil Steenstra, Craig Oingsley. Okay? Anybody else? Okay, motion to close, late public comment.
So move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. We do have one matter of personnel in executive session, and there will be, when we come out, we will come back in the session and resolve what we're going to talk about in executive session. So there will be action taken after executive session. Okay? You have a motion on the floor to go into exec.
So move.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next meeting is May 18th, 7 p.m. Now, is this going to be a resolution?
No, just a motion.
A motion to post.
No, 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 no. That's the 18th, we need that.
Okay, so we're just going to come out, post a position, not backfill nothing, just post it. Okay. Okay. I need a motion on the floor to post a foreman's position for the DPW.
So move.
I need a, do I have a second? Rich?
And Rich.
All fa, could I have an all fa, all favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. All right. Kevin, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Enjoy.